Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, January 12 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started tonight by asking our clerk to read our roll, please.
Council members Breckie? Erickson?
Yes, here.
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Knightzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
All right, so we have Pat, or Counselors Breckie, Sale, and Starr joining us via teleconference tonight, here to give our invocation tonight, for the first time, I believe. So thanks for being here, is Pastor Lane Nelson with the Eastside Lutheran Church. So thank you, Pastor Nelson. Will rise for his invocation for us, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to be with you and for all of you in the work that you do. As you know, the city of Sioux Falls needs selfless courageous leaders, and so thank you for giving of yourselves to serve in this capacity. Please know that you are being prayed for on a regular basis in churches like my own and churches all across the city. So, thank you for your work. Let us pray. Gracious, present, and loving God, we give you thanks for the ways in which you make yourself known in our lives and in our communities. Tonight, as we gather in this hall, we ask your blessings on the city of Sioux Falls, its inhabitants, and those of the surrounding communities. Make yourself known through the actions of our residents. May our lives be filled with selfless giving. May we look not to the needs of our own, but to the needs of our neighbors. Bless this group of leaders as they meet and give of themselves that they will be guided by your hand, that they will especially look out for those who cannot look out for themselves, and that through them you would bring peace and healing and wholeness to this city. Guide us and keep us that we might find joy in what we do. May we find meaning in all of our work, and may our purpose be yours. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I also want to recognize Scout Troop 346 is here with us tonight. So, thanks, fellas. Appreciate you giving me a little time at the beginning of the meeting to recognize you. Hope you enjoy your time here. We'll move on to Item 4, which is our consent agenda. Look for any changes or otherwise a motion there.
Second.
Motion to approve by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Kylie on that. Any discussion, counsel, on this? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Onto our regular agenda, Item 10. Look for a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Second, Knightzer.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Knightzer to approve this item. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right, hearing none. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Before we continue on with our agenda, just want to review public input for our agenda items coming up here. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all of our regular agenda items, the comments are limited to the agenda item that we're considering at that time only. During general public input at the very end of the meeting, comments will last no more than three minutes per person, and comments are limited to topics which do not involve agenda items that appeared earlier in the agenda, as comments will have already been received into record for those items. So, we'll move on to Item 11, please.
Second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by changing a street name. Private applicant, Jardine Construction.
Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kurt Peppel, Assistant City Engineer. Second reading of the street renaming. It is in the Cardinal Cove addition near 41st and Marion, just to the northwest of that intersection. The proposal is to change West 38th Street Place to West Cardinal Cove Place to reflect the addition, the subdivision there. Applicants are CAM Construction, who is the developer, and Jardine Construction, who is building the majority of the homes along there. Engineering has made contact with the other owners along this street section. Is our understanding that this has been the plan all along, and the people who have bought those homes were under the understanding that it would be changed at some point. Street renaming committee of Public Works, Fire Rescue, Planning and Development Services, Parks, and GIS has reviewed the request, and we support the renaming.
All right, thank you, Kurt. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Kurt on this one?
Move approval, Knightzer.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Knightzer, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Any discussion amongst the council? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote on this, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 12, please.
Second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving termination of the railroad switch track easement.
Good evening, Dustin.
Evening, Council, Mayor, Dustin Powers, Planning and Development Services. Tonight, this item is an agreement, termination agreement between the city of Sioux Falls, Sioux Steel Company, and Gorley Properties Downtown. The termination would be for a railroad switch track easement that's located on the Sioux Steel redevelopment property downtown. Gorley Properties and the city of Sioux Falls are, have interest in the easement from when it was originally created quite some time ago. With the, the staff has reviewed the railroad easement, since there's no use, future use of railroad activities occurring within this area of downtown. Staff is supportive of vacating or terminating that easement. So tonight's approval would authorize the mayor to enter into that termination agreement to remove that from the Sioux Steel property.
All right, thank you, Dustin. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, any questions for Dustin on this?
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Counselor Selberg, seconded by Counselor Kylie to approve this item. Any discussion, counsel, on this? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 13?
A resolution vacating the west 33 feet of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter lying adjacent to Track 1, Nakuma's Second Edition, and also lying adjacent to the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter, all in Section 12 Township 101 North Range, 49 West Minnehaha County, South Dakota, listed as future street right-of-way as recorded as Platte 95540 in Book 69 of Platte's Page 8, as shown on Exhibit A, Private applicant, Golden Gateway LLC.
Good evening, again, Kurt Peppel, Assistant City Engineer. Items 13 and 14 kind of go together. Item 13 is right-of-way vacation, just west of Veterans Parkway and north of Madison Street. AE2S, on behalf of the property owner, submitted the right-of-way vacation petition pursuant to South Dakota law and complies with the street vacation policy. No utilities exist in the area to be vacated, therefore no easement will be reserved. Neighborhood meeting was not required as no road exists there today. Engineering supports it and requests your approval.
All right, thank you, Kurt. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this one? Counselors, any questions here?
Kylie.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve this item. Any discussion here, counsel? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 14?
A resolution approving the release of a permanent utility easement located in Track 1 Nakuma's Second Edition in the east half southeast quarter of Section 12 Township 101 North Range, 49 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Minnehaha County, South Dakota. Sponsor, Mayor.
This easement, again, just sitting to the, to the east of the right-of-way that was just vacated. No utilities exist in there. It's no longer needed. Everything, the road and new easements will be relocated just to the east. You can kind of see the outline of that with the dotted lines. Engineering requests your support and approval.
All right, thanks, Kurt. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this one? Counselors, you got any questions here? For a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Counselor Jensen on this. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 15?
A resolution granting consent of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, to the transfer of control of the Open Video System License Agreement and Open Video System to GIDI Rushmore Topco LLC. Sponsor, Mayor.
Good evening, Mike.
Mayor, or afternoon, evening, where are we?
We'll call it evening now, already.
We'll call it evening, Mayor and counselors. The resolution in front of you comes from the sale of the parent company for VAS Broadband, who is in control of the open video licensing system. October of last year, they submitted the request for that, and the resolution accepts, requests acceptance of that transfer, that control.
All right, thanks, Mike. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counsel, do you have any questions for Mike on this?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 16?
A resolution vacating a portion of the Arrowhead Parkway right-of-way as shown on Exhibit A, Track 2 Willow's Edge Edition. Recommendation, set a date of hearing for Tuesday, February 9, 2021. Sponsor, Mayor.
Good evening, Kurt Peppel, once again. Item 16 and 17 are somewhat related. They're in the same vicinity along Arrowhead Parkway. We are just to the east of Veterans Parkway, about halfway between Veterans and Six Mile Road. We do have some projects coming up in this area, and there's just some little remnants of right-of-way that we are proposing to vacate just to create a more uniform right-of-way. They're just kind of some, show you a better, just some little, some little areas that really don't make sense, so we're going to create a more uniform right-of-way. We, the developer along this area, along with the city, we worked together to create a right-of-way vacation petition for South Dakota law, complies with the street vacation policy. No utilities exist in the area to be vacated, and there will be no easements reserved. Approval of this section, again, just, it creates a more uniform right-of-way. When people are working out there, they, they know where the right-of-way is, and there isn't a little ins and outs. So, engineering requests your support and approval to set the date of hearing.
Thanks, Kurt. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, any questions for Kurt on this one? Hearing none. Need a motion to set a date of, excuse me, set a hearing for Tuesday, February 9.
Still moved?
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen on that hearing date. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 17, please.
A resolution vacating a portion of the Arrowhead Parkway right-of-way as shown on Exhibit A, Track 3 Willow's Edge Edition. Recommendation, set a date of hearing for Tuesday, February 9, 2021. Sponsor, Mayor.
This Track 3 is just sitting to the east of Track 2, the previous one. Really not a lot to add, other than, again, just creating the more uniform right-of-way out there. Engineering requests your support to set the date of hearing.
All right, thanks, Kurt. Anyone here to speak on this one? All right, counselors, do you have any questions on this? Look for a motion, set a date of hearing for Tuesday, February 9.
Move to approve. Second, Knightzer.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Knightzer on that date of hearing. Any discussion here? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Onto our new business, item 18?
A motion to reconsider an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing a provisional one-time supplemental appropriation to fund a COVID-19 public health education campaign, health $100,000. The ordinance was considered at the meeting of January 5, 2021. Sponsors, Council members Breckie and Sale.
Counselor Breckie, I'm going to give you the floor on this.
Thank you, Mayor. It was brought to my attention after we passed the ordinance on second reading last week, that the finance director discovered that we had forgot to put the emergency clause in, and I will take responsibility for that. I just didn't catch it. We had put it in the previous $20,000 one that we adopted previously, and I just didn't notice that it wasn't in there. And so adding the emergency clause will allow the administration to spend the money immediately and not have to wait 30 days, which would be very detrimental, because they need it right now for the campaign that they're already planning, and they just need to be able to enter in those agreements and make those buys and execute. So, it's a cleanup error by a mistake that we made by not putting it in, just an oversight, and I appreciate your support. So I would move to reconsider and add the amendment to it. So I don't know if I, if we just moved to reconsider and vote on that, and then I add the amendment. Is that how we do it, Mayor?
Yep, that's, that's correct. We'll first take a vote on the motion to reconsider, and then we'll get an approval on the item, and then we'll amend it, and then we'll vote on that. So, right now, I guess we're just voting on a motion to reconsider. The motion to reconsider is, it's non-debatable, so I'll just simply ask, and it doesn't require, well, it does require a second. So, Counselor Breckie, if you want to just officially make that motion, we'll get a second, and then we'll vote on that.
Move to reconsider, Breckie.
Okay.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Breckie, seconded by Erickson to reconsider. Let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, the motion to reconsider passes eight, zero. So now the, the ordinance as originally presented is now up for consideration. So, first we'll have public input. Is anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Good evening.
Good evening. Scott Erstman, Sioux Falls. I find this a bit ironic, because we spent $250,000 for COVID tourism, trying to get people to come to Sioux Falls because they couldn't go to places in Minnesota, Iowa, Nebraska, et cetera. So we took $250,000 of taxpayer money to tell people to come here and visit Sioux Falls, go to our restaurants, help spread COVID, please. And now we want to spend $100,000 telling people how to protect themselves from COVID. As I understand it, this is about vaccination education. Number one, the national news has been talking about the vaccinations for two, two, three months now. People understand that the vaccinations are out there. Number two, we can't get them in the arms fast enough. I'm not sure who we're educating here to get a vaccination. People want it. If you said tomorrow anybody in Sioux Falls could get a vaccination, come on out to the convention center, we'll have a drive-through, you would have thousands of cars. I don't know what we're educating people about. Some people say, well, some people don't want the shot. Oh, well, they can go to the back of the line, as far as I'm concerned. Maybe they'll change their mind once their friends and neighbors get a shot. I also have a problem with the spending the money at all. We have a health department, we have a false community health, where we have a doctor that works there, runs the place. We have a media services department, we have an IT department. We could definitely put a PSA together that's 30 seconds long to put on CityLink, and we could pass it along to the local TV stations and radio stations and play for free. This is just another way to take our money, transfer it to some private company, to come up with some cute thing to tell people they need a vaccination. I think the people who want a vaccination, want it. They would get it tomorrow if they could. And the people who don't want it, I don't know what to tell them. They, I guess they have a right to not want to have one. But you want to know what people who don't want to get vaccination? They know it exists, too. It's not that they're, oh, I didn't know we were getting vaccinations for COVID. I haven't turned the television on in five months. I mean, come on. You know, we sat and fought about spending $100,000 for a 100-year institution municipal ban, and we fought it out back and forth for weeks on end. But, oh, we got $100,000 from Pace Mad Agency to put together a thing to educate people that they need a vaccine. It's on the news every single night. People, what, what are we up to, 356,000 people dead in America? I think people understand vaccines. You know, often it amazes me when I see you guys spend, the way you spend money sometimes. And like I said, the irony of spending twice as much on trying to get people to come here to spread COVID, which I was, we were told that it was going to be postponed or whatever. There's still ads everywhere for it. Experience Sioux Falls, they're everywhere. Never was postponed. So what are our priorities here? Do we want people to get a vaccination? Do we want people to stop spreading COVID? Or do we want them to come here and to spread it? I don't know. I mean, it's one thing to pass something maybe three years ago and then change it three years later, but you just passed COVID tourism a few months ago, and now you're like, hmm, maybe we should spend some money on telling people COVID is dangerous. One of the most disappointing things about COVID, and it's not just this body, it's the state, it's national, all the way down, and a reason a guy didn't get reelected, is because the way COVID has been handled by government on every level has been pathetic and disgusting. There's a lot better things to spend $100,000 on. Maybe setting up a place where people can get their vaccines faster. That would be an excellent way to spend $100,000. Streaming it to people through as fast as we can get the vaccines in.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item? No? All right, anyone else? All right, then what we'll do here to keep this moving then is we'll need a motion to approve the ordinance a second, and then we can move to the amendment. So I can get, can I get a motion to approve this?
Move to approve, Breckie.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Breckie, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Counselor Breckie, you want to introduce an amendment here? Counselor Breckie, do you want to introduce that amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The amendment is simply an emergency clause that we've been adding on these ordinances that are, that we're utilizing during this crisis, and taking advantage of the opportunity to have them become effective immediately. It shall read, "This ordinance is hereby declared necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, and shall become effective immediately upon its passage and publication pursuant to SDCL 9-19-13." I would move to amend the ordinance to have that provision added.
All right, motion to amend per that language. Did we get the entire? I'll tell you what I'm going to do. Before we vote, before we get a second on that, I think there's some additional language that I want to make sure we get in here. So I'm going to read what I think is the proposed amendment, and you can just make sure that this is, this is correct. What I have in front of me is, whereas on March 12, 2020, the mayor issued Executive Order Number 218 declaring emergency to address the novel coronavirus COVID-19, and whereas on March 13, 2020, the governor declared an emergency in the state of South Dakota in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, and adding a Section 3 to read, "This ordinance is hereby declared necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, and shall become effective immediately upon its passage and publication pursuant to SDCL 9-19-13." Can I get a motion on?
I would amend my amendment.
All right, so a motion for, for that amendment made by Counselor Breckie. Do you have a second for that, then?
Second.
All right, second by Counselor Kylie. All right, is there a discussion amongst the council on this, then? All right, hearing none. Can I have a vote on the roll call, vote to amend, please?
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight to zero. Now we're to the, that motion as amended. Any other discussion or amendments to make on this? All right, I just then need a roll call vote, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We're at our general public input portion of our agenda for tonight, and as a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that did not appear earlier on our agenda. So at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public forward for general public input. Good evening.
Greetings. I'm David Zokitis, and I have a civil rights topic for you tonight. It's felony murder. Well, what the heck is felony murder? Well, if you have any relationship at all to a felony in which somebody gets murdered, well, then you can be charged with that murder. I, I'm really not happy with this tangential involvement business. I think that being charged in something so tangential, it's just an injustice. I don't like that. So, as a hypothetical example, if you loan your car to a friend, and he goes and robs somebody and shoots them and drives away, both of you are charged with murder. Well, if you're going to go that tangentially, maybe you should charge your parents, too, and the gun shop and the gun company. That's the law, felony murder. Now, I bring this up because it happened here in Sioux Falls a little while ago. You can see that there's an Argus Leader article on it. Somebody killed somebody else, and semi-involved person was charged with felony murder. Now, what really happened is it was a drug deal robbery, it went bad, somebody killed your partner, and you got charged with murder. I think we're being overly tough on crime. It's just to our disadvantage, and because, you know, drug dealers don't have rights- you know, if drug dealers don't have rights to due process, well, then neither do I and I find that very troubling. So my recommendations here are to legalize cannabis, that's kind of going on, but pretty slow about it, and I think we should address the social drivers behind addiction and crime so that we have less addiction and less crime. I think felony murder should be appealed, I mean repealed, and we should care about our constitutional rights because this is the United States of America and where are, where are we if we do not have constitutional rights? Now, I always like to end my presentations with a landscape, this turns out to be a moonscape, it's kind of a cool picture, a little better on the cell phone. And with that, of course, have a good evening everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else here tonight for general public input?
Scott Ersmann Sioux Falls, I was glad that, uh, David came up there and did that presentation because it kind of goes into what I'm going to talk about tonight. It's called prior restraint in the First Amendment and you're allowed to say and talk about whatever you want to. He came up here and talked about felony murder, maybe it had nothing to do with city business, but the First Amendment allows him to do that at government meetings. There was a counselor last week that opposed to it and what was most disappointing wasn't what she had to say, what was most disappointing is that our city attorney told her that she was wrong. There's mountains of cases on prior restraint in the First Amendment. You cannot tell a citizen what they can say at this podium as long as they're talking about government business. Government cannot restrict the free speech of a citizen. Once the council votes on an item, it's done, it's in the books, it's signed off. They can come up here and talk about it all they want, you can't tell us that we can't talk about business, that's a First Amendment violation in the number one order. There's so many Supreme Court cases, it'll take you hours to just click on each of them. I don't know why we think in the city of Sioux Falls that our homeroom char, homeroom charter is somehow higher than the Bill of Rights, the US Constitution, the state constitution, I'm giving you, you don't have no right, you have a right for decorum, people can't come up here and harass you and threaten you, people can't come up here and swear and be crazy, they do. But you can't tell me what I can't talk about when it has to do with government business at all, you have no power to do that. And I'm warning you, that if someone does come up here and do that during public input and you gavel them or try to get them arrested or restrained or moved from here for violating something that you guys can't really do anyway, there will be the biggest First Amendment case you've ever seen on this city and there has been lots of First Amendment attorneys who have been salivating to come after this city for that. And you will find out real quick how important the First Amendment is and how broad it is. I, I, I mean, just read it, read the First Amendment, government cannot tell you what you can say. There are certain limits to it, they're very far and few between, they're tiny little things. This needs to be scrubbed from public input, we need to move public input back to the beginning of the meeting where we didn't have this problem and it needs to be back to five minutes. It's a joke, you guys have trampled the First Amendment in this city with what you've done, trampled on it, you should be ashamed as public officials.
Thanks, anyone else this evening for general public input?
Mayor Counselors, I'm John Cunningham. I read with interest in the paper today that the city has purchased ethics insurance to protect yourselves against, uh, legal expenses for ethics violations. Many people in the city believe that that's a, a waste of government money, many others believe that it's a prudent expense and it all depends on you. Insurance is a way of spreading the risk of uncontrollable items over time and people and, and if the question comes down, is this controllable? If it's controllable, then the people who are opposed to it are right. If you, and the, and the ordinance seems to imply that, the ordinance is very clear and in fact, uh, and if, and a reading of the ordinance can, can be very instructive in helping you avoid, uh, ethics violations. And it has a fallback position, if you even have the slightest question about whether a position, uh, an action is a violation, you can ask for an advisory opinion from the city, from the, uh, from the Board of Ethics, they'll give you that opinion and you can be safe. And so with that in mind, they, the people who are opposed to it have an, have an argument. If it's not controllable, if there's no way that you, you can control the actions of the city council and you expect a number of cases of, uh, ethics violations to go to the Board of Ethics and eventually to the city council, uh, then it's a prudent expense. The, uh, the, the question is, is it controllable? And the implication on the, on the, in defense of the people who support this, the Board of Ethics found this as a common practice and that, uh, and if it's much to, if it's going to continue to be a common practice, you actually do need protection against the, uh, legal expenses that come, come with that. And so the only reason for having this is if you expect a continuation of ethical actions, unethical actions, they could be brought to the attention of the Board of Ethics and eventually to the city council. And if so, then the people who are, who support it are right. If you can control the, the problem using the, the methods available to you, then this is a waste of money. If you can't control the problem and you expect it to continue regularly, then this is a very good expense and it's all up to you.
Thank you, anyone else for general public input? All right, hearing none, is there any other new business? Look for a, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved Jensen.
Okay.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Erickson, take a roll call vote on our motion to adjourn please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
All right, ADO, we're adjourned, have a good night everyone, thank you.